Evening, welcome to the study session, August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Donna, will you roll call please?
Well, Councilmember Vlach.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Marinesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Sapp.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
My public works director Jay Harris has information for us about Coda Street.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. Coda Street Traffic Calming Project Update. It's been about a year and there's been a lot of conversation about the street. And I wanted to just go over a bunch of materials with you this evening. So on the first slide there, I got that, just go back just one slide if you wouldn't mind. There, yeah. So we have two thousand thirteen, that came from Google Street View. Twenty twenty-three, right before the project, and then twenty twenty-five after the project. And so the calming measure that was chosen is reverse curves. Some people call them chicanes to try to slow traffic down with the calming method, and I'll get more into that in a minute. So I'm gonna go back in time a little bit. So in two thousand fifteen, the Community Development Department did a community vision action plan. It's a full manual. I don't know if folks have seen that. It's really good reading. And if you haven't looked at it in about a year, it's really good to pull that out and flip through that. So this was a vision in two thousand fifteen. That's how far back some of these elements went. So the street improvements were part of the downtown vision plan. So you can see bicycle parking. You can see that they have bike lanes on the roadways that might be railroad avenues down the road. And then the alleys where they were paved a little different and a lot of landscaping and that sort of thing. And then street seating was a main thing on the street improvement plan. Next slide, please. So also, they had a thing called a green street loop. So that went down Seventh, down Coda, down First, and then up Cedar Street. So that's sort of the green street loop idea. And what that was, was a lot of trees, a lot of stormwater planters, street seating. So the goal of Coda was to start greening it up. Next slide. So then also part was public open spaces were in the plan. And so you can see on Coda Street, it was the paver lot, which is a green street element. And also the park at the end of it with the basketball court and
Pickleball.
That's it. I almost said tennis. Pickleball. It's not tennis anymore. Next slide. So the arts district, that was part of the downtown plan. And so, and it shows the district boundaries, which are somewhat similar to what you folks ended about a year ago adopting as the creative district, what the arts district is part of that. Next slide. So last summer, the creative district had proposed ideas, which came out of the comp plan, but they moved a little farther to more specific ideas, right? So you had lighting and street trees, asphalt earth, bicycle parking, a better downtown wayfinding, which the whole downtown needs wayfinding, right? Traffic calming. In that particular instance, before we actually developed the final plan, you could see that it was a one-way street with sixty-degree parking in that instance. But you could see that the proposal was to move people from side to side on the street as it currently exists now. And then stormwater seating for the green streets type of design. Next slide. So we came up with a temporary improvement plan. That was, we use SCJ Alliance. And so this was the conceptual one that we gave them. And this shows at the far end, down by First to Second, the string lighting that went over the street. And then you can see the parking, how it alternated from one side to the other. And we're trying to get tree placements in. We chose these planter boxes with some seating on for now because they can be moved around, right? And we put them in different spots. If people liked them, we could buy more. We could move them to a park if they weren't working out. This was all, this whole thing is a temporary design because we're working on it, right? So next slide. So SCJ actually did the final plan. They did it over the top of an aerial photo. And so that is what you see on the ground now. That you can see that the parallel stalls were removed and the sixty-degree stalls were put in. And then ADA was added. So we're required by the Public Right-Away Accessibility Guideline Manual that when we change striping, that we gotta put in handicap stalls. So however it goes tonight, we have handicap stalls on the street somewhere, right? And I'll go with that in a little bit. You can see that, go back just real quick. On the hatch area though, those are gonna be future planters in the final configuration. Wherever we end up with the configuration, we wanna go to a green street design, right? Next slide, please. So from first to sixth, there was sixty-six parallel on-street stalls and there was no ADA at that time. Those were put in a long time ago. And we put in sixty-five parking stalls. We didn't hit each block count. There's a few more up here, a few less down on the other end. And then there's five ADA stalls in the sixty-five and then one loading stall. And that's a telecare. There's also a stall that's hatched off in front of telecare right now that was for the mailbox. Come and find out. The post office is supposed to pull in, deliver their mail, and then leave again, right? They can't pack up, okay? Well, we didn't know. So anyways, that could probably get us back up to sixty-six with the one loading stall in front of telecare. Next slide. So traffic calming complaints. This is for any project, just in general, and I'll get to the specific comments that we received. So most of it is a negative impact that people have on vehicle operations and accessibilities. There's a little additional travel time because you're going slower. That was the intent, right? That could be because of the chicane design or speed humps, a roundabout type of traffic circle design, other ways to slow people down, right? Larger vehicles have hundred access, whether they're parking or going down the road. It's a little tight and they go slower. The emergency response vehicles, though, it does. Whether it's the police leaving or this could be a fire truck. It does affect their response times a little bit. We do have railroad though that's more of a through corridor, right? And then there is some wear and tear on vehicles, mostly for the traffic speed humps where you're going over the bump. So some community opposition, neighborhood disruptions. So the placements, you have a speed hump right in front of your house. You don't like that, right? Because you can hear people shocks all the time and their brakes and accelerating and all that. There is some inconvenience. People feel that it might impact their property value. And then the construction of the actual improvements caused problems, right? That this temporary striping wasn't too bad. It took a couple of days, right? When you go in though, and if we had all the money in the world and we went to a permanent project with stormwater planters and all that, that's significant. We're doing concrete and stormwater work and roadway work and all sorts of things. So when we get in future phases of this, there are some construction impacts. And we try to minimize those. We get a lot of notification here, a lot of pre-warning, website information. We put up the science, the reader board signs are out right now for Fifth Street for the fencing project we're doing there. So we do a good job of trying to keep people informed. So then people question the effectiveness of certain measures, especially if speeding still exists, right? So if you put in traffic calming measures and people are still driving too fast or there's still a ton of volume, because they do cut down on volume also, right? That people go out there and they decide to go another route because they don't wanna drive through the chicanes or over a speed hump or round a roundabout. It changes traffic behavior also. And then I talk about noise, braking, accelerating. So they can be expensive. And then benefits of that expense are questioned by people, right? And then you can use a little more fuel if you're braking or accelerating a lot. Some of that's speed humps where you're going over a pretty major transition. And then finding solutions. So public engagement and communications, that's why I'm here, right? And that we need to involve the community in the planning, decision-making process. And it's vital to addressing the concerns, building support, and not everybody's gonna support it, but general consensus, right? And then we tailor solutions for each roadway segment if possible or each corridor, right? And so that's good, especially when you have a temporary thing in. We can still tailor make things here, right? So and there's not a one-size-fits-all. And we're trying to minimize negative impact, i.e. cut through traffic and speeding and trying to maximize benefits for the corridor and the property owners. And so we gotta evaluate and adapt. That's why we're here. And then post-implementation measures are crucial. We need to assess the effectiveness of these measures and make any adjustments. And try to address as many concerns as we can, obviously. And then we need to find that balance, right? Traffic calming, there's always a balance that you're looking for safer and you're looking at more livable communities. But then you wanna minimize potential inconvenience. Just reference to the fire department, police, that sort of thing, to be successful. Next slide. So prior to twenty twenty-four, cars were traveling at excessive speeds, cutting through. And then they weren't stopping for pedestrians at the crosswalk. When you go a little faster, you just tend about to do that. For example, you go over by Safeway there, those flashing beacons have helped a lot. I don't know if they get your attention when you're driving through there. When they're going, you definitely stop, right? So and then the roadway's rough. It's still rough now. We're working on plans to address that. And then there was lack of ADA parking. And that's a general comment. Downtown needs some more ADA on-street parking. So after the twenty twenty-four project, you guys have probably heard more than I have, okay? So but this is the stuff I picked up on, that larger pickups can extend out into the travel lane at times, right? The roadway curves make the road more difficult to drive. And that vehicles can park in the actual travel lane. And there was reasons for that, that the striping you could still sort of see for some of the stalls. We got a lot of that addressed. The striping needs to be tuned up. I'll talk about that in a minute. But it's starting to fade out because it's on concrete. And that's one of the reasons why I'm here, is we need to get some more paint down on the road. Whichever way it goes, we need paint down on the road. And then a car turning right in and out of a driveway, they might have to swing into the lane for a second and sort of get out of the way of the car. If there's a car coming the other way, they might need to slow down. Or you might need to just wait and then turn right in or out, right? And new lane lines aren't very visible, the existing parking lines. We went through and fixed that part of it. We actually added reflectors too that help brighten it up. There's quite a few more things we can do to the existing roadway. The post office wouldn't deliver to that mailbox. They didn't wanna back out. When you're backing out of a diagonal stall, you can't see the car coming. That's with any parking lot. When you're backing out and if there's two cars on each side of you, it takes a second. Luckily, your backup camera, though, and your car will beep now. On newer cars, you have an old car, it won't. But it will stop you, you know, if you try to pull out. But in a minute, I'll describe that the traffic has slowed way down. And so backing out should be similar to the parking lot. They might be moving a little faster. But and the stalls are at sixty, so it's a little easier to get out of them. They're not perpendicular stalls. And then there was a comment that there's already adequate street parking prior to the change. And now with the new paving parking lot, there's even more parking. And that's true. There's a lot more parking. And we're at about the same numbers. The locations of parking has changed a little bit, though. This end is a little heavier on parking. And then I just quoted what the person said, that whoever came up with the idea for the change clearly not seek, did not seek input from others because this consensus of the project is a mistake, okay? So that was in an email that someone had sent me. Next slide. So a couple of options here. We can go back to the existing roadway configuration with the parallel parking stalls. Start over on the traffic calming ideas, right? There's still ideas out there, right? And so if you take out the chicanes on the roadway, you get limited to traffic circles, speed humps, tables at the intersections, at the crosswalks, that people go up and then go across the intersection and go back down. Those sorts of things. And we got to to take the lines out that we have right now. We gotta hydroblast it because it's on concrete, so we gotta use high-pressure water. And this is a special machine that comes out at really high pressure to take the striping off. You're still going to see the striping because it's gonna be really clean concrete, right? So we gotta put, the old road did not have a centerline stripe in it. We need to put one in now. Because you'll still see the old, the centerline stripe that's in there right now. So I'll have to restripe the roadway. And then I gotta put the parking stalls back in. And then it's about twenty-five thousand to revert it back. About nine thousand of that is our city staff time, though, out doing a bunch of different things. Like removing the ADA signs and the ADA striping, you know, the blue thing, blue-white thing that's on there, all that. And then the unknown on option A right now is ADA, so they'll have to put some back in again. And I have to go to this Public Right-Away Accessibility Standards Manual. And with that, they have very specific things that you can do on an existing roadway with a sidewalk this wide. They have all sorts of things. You have to locate them up by the intersection, but I still need to get figured out how big is the stall they end up with the new ADA stall? Where do they unload? What ramp do they go to? That sort of thing. So we'll need to work on that a little bit if we go back to the older design. And then in the future, we have to design a project to reduce speeding and volume too. And to improve the crosswalk and pedestrian safety. And that's, I talked, speed humps, traffic circles, crosswalk speed tables, speed signs, that sort of thing. We have some tools left here. One thing that I didn't talk about on the last slide is what people are driving right now. Why don't you go to the next slide? Because I don't think I have it on here. I didn't. So we have, if you've gone out and you see our radar signs out there, those are the solar panels. They don't have your speed on it right now. They're measuring the speed of everyone driving by, though, but it's not reporting back to you. We have that turned off. And so right now, we're getting about eight hundred trips going westbound. This is on weekday, and about seven hundred trips going eastbound. So we're getting about fifteen hundred trips per day. And for downtown street, that's quite a few. For a local street, you wouldn't be happy if you lived on that local street. As a business owner, you're pretty happy that you're on a street with this much traffic. The actual speed, and we didn't do a study in last summer before we actually did it, and I wish we would have. This didn't hit our radar. And if I'd have that study, I'd be able to say what the prior amount of traffic was. It was probably more because you had cut through traffic. People go other ways now because they don't like driving through all this. So the speed, so we call it the eighty-fifth percentile speed, and it's at twenty miles an hour now. So that's eighty-five percent of the traffic is traveling at twenty miles an hour or less, which is really good news. So the people slowed down significantly. The outline's speed right now, that's the fastest speed reported when the signs were up, was thirty-six miles an hour. And so I don't think they followed all the curb stuff. They just blew straight through the thing at two AM or whatever it was. And then the average speed is fifteen miles an hour, so it's good. And when you stand out there, generally, most people are driving it, paying attention, doing what they need to be doing and driving slow. And these are just with the temporary striping improvements, right? They're not planters and green things and benches and, you know, more of a final concept sort of thing. So option B, you can improve the existing temporary striping and complete a design corridor plan, which would be the next step. And then you show all the permanent facilities in there. So a permanent facility would be like that stormwater planter off to the right. You can see where the cars, in that case, they're parallel, and the water infiltrates into the ground. And then it overflows back into the pipe again after a while. And any excess water can continue on the way it's going right now. We can also soften the existing roadway curves. When you drive into them, I'm even guilty of this. Your tire isn't following that centerline stripe necessarily. I tend to cut over a little bit. And we think we could probably bring it into the intersections a little bit and work on the first parking stall there. And just sort of soften those curves a little bit, make it a little more user-friendly there. So we would add additional centerline striping with option B, more reflectors on the fog line. We held off on those. We were gonna put more reflectors down, so it's much more visible on a rainy day. And that we're looking at about two thousand dollars to just go tune up what we have there right now. To go and repaint it every year because there's a lot of stall lines now. There was Ts and Ls before. They were little small things. We would go do that, but it runs seven thousand a year to bring a contractor in. It's likely we were probably getting a striping machine or borrowing the county's striping machine if it's capable of doing this with a remote sprayer. We're not using the actual truck. We'd have to go remote stripe them all. But anyways, we need to figure out a way to save some money on the yearly striping of what's, if we keep this, what's out there right now. We can also go to thermoplastic down the road, which gives us ten to fifteen years of no striping. But it's at a significant higher cost. And then the other thing about trucks sticking out when we see them, we can put something on their windshield, just notifying them that there's a lot, like Mark drives a big truck and he takes up a stall in the quarter. But there's a lot of people that drive larger vehicles. They just need to park in other areas. It makes sense. I don't think people realize that their truck's hanging out. They just wanna go and pay their bills something real quick or whatever they're doing, right? So then in the future, if we went with option B, that we complete the creation of the creative district. Do you know where that's at? Jay Hill isn't here tonight. I think it's in the process of being planned and formulated. You gotta get to the state and file an application and do all that. And then complete the final road improvement plans. Eventually install the green street water quality planters, and that would be with any final configuration. We go through the temporary, we decide we like the temporary, and then we're gonna move to a final phase. Because once you start putting in curbs and stuff, there's not, you don't wanna go back, right? Okay? And then then some of the concept that was in the creative district was intersection murals. You can see that down the bottom there. There was a community that came out, painted their mural. This was by a little high school from what I remember. And so then there's candlesticks around it. So that's in the center of the intersection. The intent is for you to go around it and then turn and make your turn. These circles, though, don't extend back super far. There's some people that like to shunt and go straight. And you're supposed to go around the circle, not take your left and cut the lane and get through a little quicker, if you know what I mean. So anyways, everything has issues, though, with traffic calming or streets or any of that. So anyways, so next step. So I just need consensus, direction to move forward with either option. And then we'll have to bring a striping group to assist us with the hydroblasting and all that. And then option A will require some, a design of those stalls, might take a few weeks. It's gonna start raining soon. You can't paint in the rain, right? So it might happen next spring, depending on Mother Nature. And then I also need to know the availability of a couple of different striping contractors. They might be booked out for the rest of the season, so I need to check in with them for either option at this point. So that's it. I'm available for questions.
Right. Comments or questions?
How much of the thermostriping gonna cost?
The thermoplastic, it's about four times as much.
Four times?
Yep.
But it lasts how many times longer?
About ten times, ten, ten years, yeah, yeah.
But you wanna make sure you have your final, this is what we're keeping before you make that investment.
Oh, yeah.
So right now, it's more of a temporary thing. We would wanna make that investment.
And we might be able to do it for cheaper. We're have in our budget a thermoplastic striping budget now. And so we're buying the materials and then we're borrowing the county's thermoplastic machine. You throw the blocks in there, it melts it and it oozes out of the little tray, and you gotta watch what you're doing. You wanna shut it off when things are going wrong, right? Hot plastic, yep.
It's my personal opinion that I do not think this design works for our city. I don't think it works for our roads. I've had a couple of close calls with pedestrians. There's a large truck that has parked in front of telecare a couple of times. I travel about fifteen miles an hour. I go slow, but I can't see the curb at that crosswalk. And so I've had people step out in front of me in the crosswalk. And I've had to slam on my brakes. Thankfully, it goes slow, but if a person were to be hit in our crosswalk, our city would be sued. And I have serious concerns for people using our crosswalks. I don't feel that this is a very safe design. Also, I do avoid going down this road. I think the curves are too sharp. And I also think backing out is dangerous. It is faster than a parking lot. I've been hit in a parking lot. And I would not wanna be hit on Coda Street, so I will be voting for option A.
And just, we're not voting. This is a study session, right? I just need consensus where we're going, yep.
I share a lot of the concerns you just did. I happen to like it, but I definitely get it. As it is now, it's definitely not perfect. I do like a curvy street. I think it slows us down and it makes me like to stop on Coda more. And I feel like, Mark, that's just based on what I witnessed. I know we've got a lot of people downtown. So I like it, but it's definitely, it would, it does need to be clear. It's definitely hard to see as it is now. So the long-term plan needs better curves and everything else, but I I would.
All right, Michelle.
I definitely think the curves could be softened and, I mean, the whole design could be, you know, improved upon. I kinda have mixed feelings about it. I don't really mind it personally, but obviously I've gotten a lot of complaints about it too.
I've heard about it all the time. I still hear about it. You know, people come in and, you know, being downtown, I'm definitely afforded the luxury of hearing your opinion, whether I want to or not. So I think we need to go with option A just upon things that I heard. And with the long trucks sticking out the back as you're coming down that road, I've seen a few times. I drive a big man, so I wouldn't park on that street. I'd do that on purpose. You know, you'd figure there would be a little bit of a factor there where people will say to themselves, hey, you know, maybe I shouldn't park here because how that's set, but that doesn't seem to matter to some people. They're just gonna park wherever, however. So I think the old way works better than the way it used to be. That's what I would go with.
Thank you.
I tell you, it is a complicated road. Cannot see in the rain, you cannot see in the sun. From day one, when it was first done, you drive down the road in the sun, you can't see where you're supposed to go. In the rain, you can't see where you're supposed to go. And as for complaints, I don't think that there has been one day in this whole year that I've been out in public that I have not had to hear about Coda Street. I even go to Target in Olympia and I hear my name being yelled from fifty feet away. And the first thing they say is, whose idea was Coda Street? I think it's too narrow. I think the concept may have been a good idea for a wider road. Coda is not that road. It needs to go back to option A, and I hope that you can do it before summer, before winter hits, because it is, it is banned by existence sometimes. That, that road is, is nothing but complaints. I have not heard one good thing about it. I think Chambers said they're getting fifty-fifty comments on it, but I don't know whether they're getting that or fifty, because I have not heard one good thing about Coda.
I've heard a lot of good things about it, that it does slow down traffic. And it is actually safer to parallel, not parallel park, but go into diagonally. And also, we have more ADA accessible spaces, and I think that's a big plus, especially if we're gonna have an ADA transition plan in the future. I also think it's an opportunity to get away from the nineteenth-century grid and do something twentieth-century and make downtown unique. Like Lumarczyk Street in San Francisco have that nice little curves. And we need to stripe it better, definitely, because then striping is like really confusing. And like the mayor said, you really can't tell because the sun is there either morning or the night because it's right there east-west, right? It's just the grid. So this is an opportunity to have something unique in Shelton, make it a destination point. If we striped it better and put more artwork there and delivered a lot of things towards the art district. But if we just go back to a grid like it was, we're just gonna be the same old, same old, and it could be any town anywhere. But this is an opportunity to be unique and to also increase the foot traffic and to get more people out of their cars and walking. And I think this, we should have And I think this, we should have twenty miles per hour downtown, twenty is plenty. So the fact that we're getting sixteen miles per hour is great. And I've heard from several business owners down there that they do like the slowdown. And Cota is kinda known as a speedway, like, you know, a drag strip. And this is, we've stopped that first through Sixth Street. You know, but if you go down the other side of Cota, it's still a drag strip, all the way down to the trailer park. So Cota is a kind of fast, dangerous street from Seventh Street on, it's, it's safer first through sixth. And I, that's something I've observed and seen and heard about. So I, I guess I've heard all the other people that Eric hasn't heard, but I've heard a lot of good things about it too. And then when people come into me complaining, I go, well, look at, we were trying to, to decrease the speed and we did. We're trying to make sure that there's more ADA parking and there is. And then they're like, hmm, okay, and it's also an opportunity to make Shelton unique. And then they start, then they start thinking about it, and it's like, okay, well, maybe, I just don't know, because it's user error, because a lot of people don't know how to use, you know, turnarounds, you know, and that's just user error, you know, let's just get into the twenty-first century and start doing things more more progressively to the future instead of looking back to the past. So that's my point of view, I'll be voting for option B if there is a vote, but I'm really strongly in favor of option B.
Don't, don't get me wrong, I mean, it did what it's supposed to do, it slowed traffic down, created ADA parking. It did that, but it created, I think, more problems than it solved, so I, I, I think it's just not white enough. I think kudos to staff that try and put something different. Let's put in some, let's put in some of these myth crossing speeds, what are they called? Speed humps or whatever they're called, let's put those in. And by the way, it's just not Cota where people were driving fast, Railroad is a racetrack. I mean, you go down Railroad and you can stand out there and at least every ten minutes with a car doing fifty miles an hour, so it's just not Cota. So let's put some speed bumps in if that's possible, and we look at the cost of that, if we wanna still keep traffic slow. I know they've got them in Lacey in this neighborhood, and it says five miles an hour, it means it. I mean, my car, like, went airborne, I was doing like ten, so.
I'm aware of any speed humps in this community, and typically you get a lot of complaints on speed humps too.
But, but the end result is, is it created more issues than I think it solved, and I think it should go back, and it should go back probably sooner than later. That's my opinion, I think if we're waiting on Sharon's opinion on that.
Well, I have lots of opinions on that. So before this all went in, my car got hit, somebody was doing sixty down Cota Street and they hit me right in front of your Rocco at sixty miles per hour, they were really, really going fast. So when this change happened, I was just like, cool, let's see how it goes, I, I'm open to new ideas. I still see people going fast, and you guys all know I walk a lot. So, but the problem is in the morning, like he was saying, you can't really see the line, so they're still going straight down it if there's not cars parked there. So there's that, I have asked people who work for emergency services, and they say they hate using Cota now, they'll try to avoid it. But the bottom line is, I've had two people tell me they love it, and hundreds tell me they hate it. And the problem is, it's not about me, it's not my personal opinion, it's the community, and that's what I'm here for, I'm about the community. So I have to tell you what they've said, they're not happy, so because of that, I think we're gonna have to try option A, but I'm, I'm open to doing some new things with option A. Maybe there's something better than getting hit at sixty, you know what I mean? There's probably something else out there that we can do. I know everything costs money, and we're always gonna make somebody upset, that's the bottom line. So, but try new things, just like back on Railroad when they did the backup parking. They tried it, found out they didn't like it, and they put it back, that's okay, you try something and you learn. So we tried something, it's not really working out for our little community, and so we'll try something new.
I think that's consensus to go that option.
That's what we needed.
Get some refined numbers, refined planning, bring it back to Council, see the idea, certainly. Add some public communication around this, so I understand when this is gonna take place and what the results may look like. That makes some near term, as well as continuing to work with the creative district folks. And this is on, on the Chamber of Commerce somehow, can maybe achieve some of the goals that were in the two thousand fifteen vision plan.
All right, there's nothing else? Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Police Captain Dan Patton, that details about Blue Bridge.
Hey Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Councils, just appreciate the, the time allotted to us to be able to come in and talk to you about this. Captain Patton's gonna do most of the presentations, I just wanted to preface this discussion with through the, through my whole career, I've witnessed officers do many gracious acts in the community. You know, they, they've offered food to individuals in need, shelter, hotel rooms, gas, transportation, money. And not to embarrass Captain Patton, but I even witnessed an officer buy a young girl a bike during the holiday season. All these acts of kindness come directly out of officers' token, there's, there's no, there was no program for this. This is just how it was done, we saw a need and we took care of it. And although that law enforcement is our primary responsibility or our core role as caretakers of the community, and I think this program will definitely enhance our ability to do that. So with that, to Captain that.
Awesome.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council. It's not very often that we get to come to you with something that's not gonna cost us any money. And it's gonna benefit the community and benefit our police officers. So earlier this year, when I heard about the Blue Bridge Alliance program, there was only a few departments in Washington State. Port Angeles, Aberdeen, Redmond, there's a couple more. So what this program is, is like the chief said, many times our officers are taking money out of their own pocket to help purchase a necessity. And in this program, we're gonna take donations in from the community and one hundred percent of that money goes back to our community. So, and then our police officers will be the ones that make the decision what they feel is an appropriate need for that, for that funding. We do give them some parameters, they can't go buy themselves Big Macs at McDonald's or anything like that. And we do, we'll have a policy in set and a training program for the officers. The officers will have a, it's like a debit card with the Visa logo, logo on it. The chief and I will control how much money they have on that based upon donations. And when they use that card for, for a need, they will have an app on their work phone. Very simple process, they take a picture of their receipt, and then they're gonna write a little synopsis, three lines or maybe three paragraphs of, of what the contact was like. Number one, this does increase job satisfaction. It's no secret that there's not a long expectation of, of life after retirement for police officers. In fact, on average, police officers will experience one hundred and seventy-eight critical incidents in their life. The average person will experience two or three. And so the key to success to our officers is to get their mindset away from the, the horrible side of policing and what they can do in the community to make things better. And the police officers that, that do that, I see them have success after retirement. They're actually happy, they, they understand. So also, no big secret, right? The, we're at an interchange with public trust with the police department. And what better opportunity for the police to interact with our community, with our members by being able to assist those in need? I can tell you, the times that we buy people some food or shoes or a bike, those people are more likely to want to cooperate with the police in the future. If you're a citizen, there may not be a big advantage to why you would wanna testify in court, you're only putting yourself at at odds against the suspect or something. But as we build this trust with, with the community by, by doing these small acts of kindness, they're going to be our helpers also, they'll be more likely to call, call into the police to report crimes, to be willing to testify in court. This improves public safety also. Currently, there is a Department of Transportation grant where if our officers see somebody that is affecting the transportation on the road, so a broken headlight, broken taillight, they're out of gas. And we use these debit cards to make a purchase there to get them off the roadway and, and, and moving again. That's one hundred percent reimbursed, it doesn't even come out of our donated funds that come in. The agreement we did with Blue Bridge Alliance was, they said they would give us twenty-five hundred dollars to start if we could fundraise the other twenty-five hundred dollars. In fact, they uploaded a thousand dollars into our account already, because we understand that the first story that we can get out on social media of us helping somebody out is hopefully gonna trigger the community to get excited behind this program and have the donations continue. It's also really budget smart. When we worked in the wintertime, it wouldn't be uncommon to come across someone not chronically homeless, but for that night, they were homeless. Their car may have broken down in town, they couldn't, they couldn't leave and they didn't have a hundred bucks for a hotel. And when it's thirty degrees and they might not be a good fit for the homeless shelter, we may deal with that person three or four times in a night. Those are services, your public safety services that are dealing with this one individual instead of doing other policing services. If we could stop one person from committing a crime by helping them out, maybe getting them going out of town, we've just saved ourselves prosecution costs, jail costs, mounting thousands of dollars just from a simple twenty dollars worth of gas. This is, once again, this is your officers making the decision what help that is. So I like to see it as kinda like a helping hand straight across or helping hand up. That's everything about budget smart, do we have another slide up there by chance? Those are just some examples that we've heard. You have a handout, you can read it, some of the examples I heard when I reached out to other agencies that aren't up here, those are some of the really cool ones. Someone had to take a young child into protective custody, the home situation was very poor. Had to take this child into protective custody, they used their Blue Bridge Alliance card to take the kid to McDonald's and get a Happy Meal. We've had, that's the one that's really resonated with me, because I think our officers would do that anyways. So also, if we encounter someone in our community, a lot of times we'll see a new homeless person that just, we've never seen them before, and all of a sudden they're in our community. And that officer talks to them and they find out that, you know what, I do have an option. My aunt and uncle or mom and dad or family that will take me in, but they live in Eugene, Oregon. And, you know, I don't have any money to get to Eugene, Oregon. The officer can purchase a bus ticket on Greyhound through the Blue Bridge Alliance and get that person a one-way ticket to Eugene so that they can have a family support network, hopefully to get this person up, up on their feet. So the funding is coming from the community. We're having an impact on our officers by having them doing, doing something positive, we're building the trust with the community. We're having an immediate effect on, on the community. And we're also having strategic outcomes by the, the fact that we're gonna have higher compliance with, you know, reporting crime. And hopefully we can divert some of our people away from the criminal justice system. The last slide is just that theory of change. And once again, this will be available to you if you want it, there is one more slide, there you go right there. And once again, that just talks about everything that, that I, that I just mentioned. What we're gonna be doing, this is about investment of one hour a week for, for me. Just making sure that the officer is properly documented, the transactions. We will be alerted anytime there's a large donation, so the chief will have a letter ready to go to that donor saying thank you, it is tax deductible. So if you're looking for tax deductions, we've already advertised this on our social media. It's as simple as just taking your phone and just scanning the QR code and make a donation. I will be hitting up our, our businesses, just asking them simply, hey, can we have a flyer here in your business? So that, and, and maybe if you have a chance, tell your customer about, about the program. That's about all I have, I'm open for any, any questions.
Right. Well, I just have a comment, a lot of comments. I wanna say thanks a lot to the Shelton Police Department, I've heard so many stories about they're doing their things out of their own pocket, and this is a great way for community policing to formalize it, to make it part of city policy, that we are not just there to to be punitive, we're there to be community members and to help out the community, like, like like everyone thinks about what, you know, oh gosh, what was that show with, oh, anyway. Maybe RFD with the sheriff and everyone's, everyone in town knew each other, right? So that's the kind of community policing that I'm for, and, and, and I really want to say that our police force already does it and this formalizes it, and I'm a hundred percent for this program and all the reasons that you gave Captain Patton. And, and I wanna congratulate again, can you tell all the officers, Chief, that we, the citizens really appreciate that the, the Shelton PD professionalism and their care and, and care towards people? So this is, you know, to formalize it, I'm a hundred percent favorable.
Yeah, absolutely, and I just wanna thank Captain Patton, he's the one who spearheaded this, he found this program, I had no knowledge of it, he found it. He went after it, he put this together in the last two months, and he's been doing a great job, and just so proud of having this, this this program for the city.
Who else doesn't understand?
Um, this sounds like a wonderful program, and I just really appreciate how this community comes together. And I also appreciate everything that the officers do for this community. So I really look forward to the implementation, excuse me, of this program.
Yeah, this was awesome, I've done ride-alongs and I've seen the officers spend their own money on people who need it. I mean, it's hot outside, I've seen them pull up when they see somebody walking, so you want a bottle of water? And they'll say, yeah, man, and they'll take that water, because, you know, a lot of them are on foot. Particular officer is trying to get the kids in a, in a, in a neighborhood a little more comfortable. People come by with stickers and they come running up to the car, it's so exciting to see them and getting the stickers. I mean, this would help with that, you know, community engagement. You know, they'd be like, you wanna throw the football, what if he had a football in the car? Would that be a terrible thing, you know, I mean, you're not on a call and those kids need that engagement. Maybe there's not another parent around at that moment, there's nothing wrong with that. All of the things that you said that would work, love that. And, and I know, once or twice for children, you did clothes for whatever situation. And an officer just went up to Walmart and bought them anyways out of their own pocket, so this is amazing. I wish we would have done it sooner. And, yeah, I, I'll even donate, absolutely, it's, and so I hope the whole community sees how awesome this is.
And the officers can still purchase those things, it's just gonna be tax deductible now for the officers.
Okay, good.
I echo everybody else, it sounds great, I keep hearing for things and seeing great things. So thanks for all the great stuff.
Good morning, Scott.
I go all the way, it was a great idea, let's get it done.
Great idea, good job, I've already made my first donation today, so hopefully that gets you to your twenty-five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
All right. Council have any new items tonight? All right, and we will during this study session at six forty-eight PM.